Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, good afternoon. Today is Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. And I would like to call to order the virtual special meeting public work session for today. And at this time, I'll ask that we pause for a moment of silence. Amen. At this time, I'll ask if Board Member Ms. Angelia Allen would lead us in the pledge of allegiance followed by the mission statement.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster attendance, excellence, and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Agenda item 2.5 is a roll call vote for attendance by the clerk, Ms. Chambers.
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson. Ms. Barnes. Ms. Hines.
Present.
Mr. Lamb. Reverend Patillo.
Present.
Mrs. Schumate.
Present.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Reverend Patillo. Already called, Jim, sorry.
Yes.
Got your good twice. Five members present, four members absent. Mr. Parent is on vacation.
Thank you so much. Hopefully, everyone else be coming in as the meeting moves along. Agenda item 2.6, hopefully, y'all had a chance to review the agenda. I now ask for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Move for approval.
Second.
The motion has been made and second, motion made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Hines. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
I'm here, I'm here.
Who's here? Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, I was on mute. I just noticed I was on mute, that's why I didn't get in on the attendance.
Okay, gotcha. Yours a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. I now ask that Board Member Tamara Schumate will read the motion to move us into closed session at this time.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. Number one, consideration of the student readmissions as permitted under Section A dot two. Number two, consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment performance and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection A point one.
Motion has been made by Ms. Schumate. Do we have a second?
Second.
I believe that was Ms. Hines.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Be that button alone. Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, thank you so much. We're now moving to closed session and the IT department will guide us into closed session at this time.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move you into closed session. For those that not moving into closed session, we're going to go ahead and mute your microphones at this time.
Thank you to everyone for your patience. I ask now, Ms. Schumate, if you can take us into regular session now.
Okay, I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only matters which are lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements and which were identified in the motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Second, Hans.
The motion was made by Ms. Schumate and second by Ms. Hines. If there is no discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines. Mrs. Hines.
I believe Ms. Hines said yes.
Okay. Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. And before we move forward, Ms. Chambers, I just want to make sure the attendance has been corrected to include Mr. Lamb and Ms. Atkinson as present.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.2, roll call vote, consideration of readmission, case number 2020-21-01. I will need a motion for approval for that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Atkinson and second by Ms. Schumate.
That was Williams.
Oh, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
It was Williams, yes.
Ms. Williams, if there is no discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Schumate.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.3, roll call vote, consideration of readmission, case number 2020-21-02. Do we have a motion for that?
Move for approval.
Second, Atkinson.
Move for approval was made by Ms. Allen, second by Ms. Atkinson. If there is no discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.4, roll call vote, consideration of readmission, case number 2020-21/03 with administrative placement. Do we have a motion for that?
Move for approval.
Second, Atkinson.
Motion made by Ms. Allen, second by Ms. Atkinson. If there is no discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.5, roll call vote, consideration of readmission, case number 2020-21/04. Do we have a motion for approval for that?
Move for approval. Allen, second.
Move for approval was made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Allen. If there is no discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate. Schumate.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6, y'all have received the school board meeting dates for the following 2020-21 school year. If there, I have a move for, a motion for approval for that.
Move for approval.
Second, Atkinson.
Motion was made by Ms. Williams. It was second by Ms. Atkinson. If there is no discussion on the calendar, I will ask now for a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.7, this is a discussion item, will be our agenda review for our September 17th virtual regular monthly meeting. I'll ask Dr. Bracy if he would, is there anything you'd like to discuss in reference to the agenda?
No, sir. The agenda is before you unless, unless any of the board members see anything that they want to share with you and Mr. Parent to amend. And if you do have something, it is helpful to us and the staff so that we can get it prepared ahead of time if you know about it. So if it's something that you think about, if you give us enough time to get that, get that item, then we can make sure we do the necessary research on it and have it for you.
All right. And we ask, of course, if there are any admissions to the agenda, send those to Mr. Parent and Dr. Bracy at your leisure board meetings for that. If there's no further discussion on.
Hello?
Ms. Williams and then Ms. Hines.
Okay, yeah, I was looking for a board member comments, but anyway, I talked with members of our committee on the renaming of the schools, Ted Lamb and Lakeisha Atkinson, and we've come up with two dates for our public hearings, September 28th, October 5th. We're going to try to do them in person at Wilson High School, of course, with the guidelines by the governor, mask, social distancing. And also, I guess, I need to ask the board, where, I know that we're doing, looking at Wilson, but there were a couple other concerns about John Tyler and James Hurst. And I'm not sure if we made a decision if whether the board agreed to look at those two, or I know we agreed to look at Wilson. So while we're doing the public hearing, should we include the other two as well, or what is the pleasure of the board?
Ms. Williams, I believe we just take the public's concerns and give them to the committee, and I guess you all do the investigative work on all the concerns that were brought forth to you, and you all, you all recommend to us, like, you feel like all three need to be changed, or one need to be changed, and then the board comes in after that and makes the.
Right.
I believe it's.
We're on top, we are, we will certainly do that. I will get with Kathy about publishing the dates of the public hearing, and they were okay with Honorable Ted and Honorable Lakeisha. So we will let you all know.
Thank you so much for being on the ball. Y'all are moving already with that, so thank you so much.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we can have a vote in November, probably after the election, but we want to hear them in September, October, and then bring the recommendation to the board in November.
Ms. Chambers, there's a specific address that the public is directed to send recommendations to the committee. It's in the policy. If you don't have that, I can give it to you.
Would you please?
I will, I'll email it to you now. There is a a specific address and maybe that, when you do the public notice for those committee hearings, it might be best to include that address, and there's the public knows where comments.
Yeah, we've, we've gotten quite a bit, you know, emails and things like that, but we do have to publish it with the address.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, can you give me those dates one more time? I'm sorry, I was slow picking up my pencil.
Right, they're on a Monday, Monday, September 28th.
Okay.
Monday, October 5th.
Okay, thank you. And looking, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. You go ahead. I was just asking if there were times for those dates.
Oh, 6:00, 6:00 PM.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Hines.
No, that's fine. In looking at the agenda for next month, I see a contract placeholder. Are we looking at specific contracts that we're going to have in there, specifically RFP for rezoning or for church lands, since we've been talking about that for a while? I'd like to know where we are with that. And then I think there was a subcommittee meeting today also that wanted to bring something forward to the board regarding signage at our schools, so those are my two concerns that I would like to discuss.
I was, I was going to mention those. Did you, Mr. Falk, did you want to mention, talk about the contract placeholder before I move forward with operations?
Yes, sir. We're, we're right now working on that RFP to try to get that all lined up, to get out with all the, the new information, obviously, that we got, and then with COVID going on. So that, we're working on that now. I would imagine within the next two to three weeks, we can get that done and out. And then we would then move forward with any of the other projects we have.
Yeah, I did want to mention the operations and technology committee. We've been meeting, meeting more often than normal because of everything that's going on, Mr. Lamb and myself. And today, we did call a last minute committed, committee meeting because we wanted to make sure that we addressed all, most of the questions that the board had asked him for the last couple of weeks in the meeting. Mr. Lamb, now he started back working this week, so it was tough for him to get on, but he's been very instrumental in meeting with operations committee also during the pandemic. I thank him for that. On today, I'm going to hit a few items we went over today briefly, and then we're going to send out full reports for you to review this evening, but I wanted Mr. Lamb to be, have a chance to review it first. I respect for him being on the committee before I sent it to everyone else at one time, so we'll get that to you sometime this evening, the full reports. But for technology, I want to thank the technology and operations staff for the work they've been doing. I mean, it's, they've, they've done remarkable. And I'm pleased to report that we have devices for 100% of our student population already ordered, and most have been distributed. They're finishing distribution tomorrow for our student population. I also want to commend parents because for pre-K, we've already distributed 75% of our devices already. And for elementary, for middle school and high school, we've already distributed 83 to 95% already. So that's showing the parents' commitment to their children's education during this time, which is very important, so we thank them for that. Also, on tomorrow, some of you had concerns about the operation of devices and questions parents and students may have. I'm pleased to say that the, the technology staff, we're putting out a schedule tomorrow for help desk, student help desk hours for next week, and it's the first week of school. Then they're also going to have a technology call center set up starting the week after then. Because we did have concerns with limited staff, they were able to contract out vendors to actually fill the positions for the call center. So the call center is going to be filled with three call center agents and one supervisor to make sure that we can issue support to our parents and our students with technology help and with our, for our staff also. There were some questions about, I know, connectivity and network for our parents and students. They're currently providing four different options for connectivity. Of course, we're still doing the connect to compete, which parents have been signing up and applying for, which is great. We've also completed and installed one of the smart buses already that will be fully capable for networking capabilities. And we've also ordered and received in the, the parts for four additional smart buses. So they're going to start working on those, get those out. Smart buses means they're going to be fully loaded with Wi-Fi capability so that students and families can connect to those buses in different neighborhoods as well. Building a perimeter Wi-Fi, they have completed the building perimeter Wi-Fi, I believe, for Wilson High School already, and they're going to be doing the other two high schools as well. So that will also be another option for connectivity will be perimeter Wi-Fi around the schools. And last but not least, we have ordered and received in over 5,000 hotspots. So if, once they receive their, their Chromebooks and other items, if they don't have networking capabilities at home, they quickly go to apply for the hotspot, and we get the hotspots distributed to the parents as well. So unlike some other localities, they only had one option for connectivity. We've been able to offer four, and they've been on top of doing everything, ordering everything in, and they've done a great job with it. Not only on top of that, our staff, so I believe Ms. Hines may have asked about that, our staff will be receiving new devices as well. Of course, those have been ordered, but because of the high demand, those won't be until the middle of September. But they will have branded devices as well, and they also have devices coming in for our IAs as well to help with instruction during the pandemic season. So they've been on top of those things, and I just want to give them, and I mean, they've done great with providing technology options for our students, families, and staff, and I'm going to thank Dean and the staff for that. Also, operations, it's going to take you about 15 minutes to read their report because they've been doing a lot during this time. But Ms. Allen, she had concerns about the cleanliness and the disinfecting of schools. All of that has been completed, has been completed. The floorwork has been completed. Walkthroughs with principals have been completed as of this week. And also, we're going to have a total of between 40 and 50 special ed students in the buildings, receiving instruction, but that's 40, 50 include CSET. So that there's a minimal amount of students that will be there, but even in those classes, Dr. Simmons performed walkthroughs with Ms. Battle Hardy to make sure that everything was up to standard as far as spacing, social distancing, PPE, cleanliness, air quality, all those things were already been, been checked off and done. And what Mr. Simmons, Dr. Simmons did this time, which helped our principals out, principals normally have to complete their, their state law checklist for their buildings, but to assist them, he personally did them himself and completed those walkthroughs and checklists for them. So I thank him for that, making it a little easier on them as far as that's concerned. I know Ms. Hines had a question about PP inventory. Dr. Simmons receives inventory updates daily in live time from the warehouse supervisor. He's receiving those daily to stay on top of what we have in inventory and in stock. And they've even had to create extra space and Clark to store regular items like tissue and things of that sort because they've ordered so much PPE and for the schools. So I want to thank him for that. I believe Mr. Barnes asked about meal pickups and drop offs for that.
That's true.
We, we have 16 schools that are going to be preparing the meals where parents can pick up. But on top of that, we also have 12 school buses that are already designated to be delivering schools to areas of need for that, and that's going to be a fluid process and monitored daily. So if we have situations where we need more, we can pull more drivers and load up more buses to make sure that food is given and distributed to our families as need, to make sure that our marginalized communities aren't left out during this process. So all, all 16 schools, 16 schools will be designated for meal pickups, and with the exception of the three middle schools and three preschools in reference to that. The last thing I'm going to point out, last but not least, is the, the signage. They have received, they have found an RFP possibility we can tag along on for the electronic boards, the signs to be replaced. But as far as the less expensive signs, which are the ones that are non-electronic, those will have to be done and purchase separately, except, except in bids. The decision a board will have to make and discuss at a later time in another meeting would be, are we going to replace all the boards at all the schools? And also, we have some schools that don't have anything right now. So of course, those would be on the top of the priority list as well, but I'm going to send all that out in this report also. But I just wanted to let you know that me and Mr. Lamb, we have been meeting with them diligently to make sure we get your questions answered as best we could. And if you have any questions from me or from the staff, they'll be happy to take those quickly from you at this time.
Hey, Vice Chair Patillo, this is Board Member Atkinson. First off, that was a great report. My question is on the signage and with the possible cooperative contract. Is there not a local vendor? Is there not a vendor in the Virginia area? I'm just wondering why are we still soliciting the culture of cooperative contracts instead of investing in small businesses?
Mr. Falk.
Ms. Atkinson, in that regard, we look for contracts locally. Those particular boards, they only have a few suppliers for those type of boards in, in the country, and so they have dedicated suppliers. Obviously, there may be some suppliers out there that do that, but that's a specialized industry. So we tried to look, we couldn't find a lot of people that do those boards in Virginia other than the few that were on this co-op contract. And that's why, and it's not a lot of manufacturers of that signage outside of school. So that's why we looked at the co-op, because it's a national co-op. And that allowed us to get, obviously, a better price and better cost containment and people that are real experienced in doing it because we do not want somebody to put it in, and we have problems going down the line with those signs as we have with the sign we have now.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we did check to see if there were any other available vendors. And you said that was the, the only manufacturer.
Well, the manufacturer that, that does this, they're one, they're one of the only that put it in place. This is not saying that we have to use the co-op contract. What we're saying is, this is probably the best vehicle. That doesn't mean that we can't do something else at, at the board's pleasure. If you decide you want us to go out and do a bid, we could do that as well. However, this co-op contract is a nationally negotiated contract, and it looks like it's the best bang for the buck right now for what we see. But obviously, you could always open it up and see what happens.
I would like to do that, open it up.
All right, I believe I had Ms. Hines and was it Ms. Schumate? Yes, okay.
I just, I wanted to say thank you, thank you first, Cardell, but thank you, you and Ted, and for staff for addressing everything that's going on right now as, as we're all in, in this together is what we keep hearing. And I do appreciate the time and the effort to handle our, all of our business, not just the emergency business that we're in. So I do appreciate that effort. So thank you for the report. I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do with these signs, one way or the other. I would just like the issue resolved just so that we have a plan and that we can move forward with it. So Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk, thank you so much for your time. I can imagine what it's like down there. So yeah, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Schumate.
My comment is along the same line as Board Member Hines. I just want to say thank you all for all of your hard work, for being attentive to some of our concerns, specifically dealing with the Wi-Fi issue. The fact that we have four options instead of just one, that does my heart well. And the fact that you guys are going beyond what most would even consider just to ensure that not only our, our students, but our parents and our teachers are taken care of. I really do appreciate all of your efforts, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And, and would it please the board as, as information comes in and references Mr. Falk to the boards, that I'll ask Mr. Parent to put it on one of the future agendas coming up soon, so that we can have a discussion on what the findings are.
Great idea.
All right, thank you so much. If there's no other business to come before this, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hines, Mr. Lamb. Mr. Hines, Mr. Lamb, and Mr. Barnes, too.
Lou, did you have yours up, too? Okay. Oh, you were saying peace, out. I got you.
Who was saying that?
You know, I can't let it go by without some instruction questions, simply because we're all in this together, and simply because we're all in this together. And so my question is coming now to, to Dr. Nguyen. I do have a question about the elementary schedule because that is the one I do have in my hand at this moment. I do have a question about the elementary schedule because that is the one I do have in my hand at this moment in time. It says on the schedule that I have that teacher office hours are for one fifty to three fifty daily. However, I still have classes that are listed as going on at that time. I'm trying to figure out when the planning time is for the teachers and when office hours are for the teachers. Because this is a, this is a time where they're going to need some time to, to do a little bit extra. So I'm looking just for clarification on this schedule that I have that was sent out by a few schools. So.
Looking at the master schedule that was sent out by the school?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind telling me what school it is?
Mine, where my son.
Simon's deal. Well, the teachers are, we are reviewing all of the master schedules. I have received those and my staff is reviewing, viewing them, and there are still some adjustments to be made. Every teacher is supposed to have a planning period. They're supposed to have duty free lunch. And then in the afternoon, they're supposed to have time from the end of the school day, which may be around one fifty, depending upon what time they start, until the end of their contract day.
Okay.
And that's when they have time. That time is used for office hours. It can be used for planning. It can be used for team planning. It can be used for professional development. We recognize that teachers need additional time, and that's why we've allotted that time at the end of the day for elementary. But they are working on those schedules and as we said, you know, they're sending them out to teachers now. But the, we gave them the master schedule template, and then they're supposed to drop the names of their teachers into those schedules and work a daily schedule for them.
Okay, because as I look at it right now, it looks like my child is on a device from nine o'clock in the morning with, with fifteen minute breaks throughout the day until two forty-five.
Well, the idea for elementary school is that the teacher checks in at the beginning of the class, and then the student has time. They check in for about fifteen or twenty minutes, and then they have time to work on their assignments or to consult with the teacher individually or in small groups. And so they're not actually on the device watching a Zoom or a video all day long. They're actually engaging in activities.
So basically, we're waiting to the first day of school to get more clarity on what the schedule is going to look like?
No, they should get their schedules back tomorrow.
Okay, so with the device, okay.
Right.
All right. I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Lamb and then Mr. Barnes?
Chairman, Patillo, no, I didn't have anything.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Mr. Barnes?
Just for informational purposes, how would the, our students, our parents request those Wi-Fi options?
So they can always call to request them, but they made it easier to where it's actually a QR code that they can actually scan. It takes them directly to the application to apply for it. But during distribution, when they pick up their devices, they can also let it be known then they don't have connectivity at home.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem. Thank you. All right, if there's no more business to come before this board?
I just, can I say a thank you to our teachers?
No.
I, I, as, as being one of you at this moment in time, sitting in your seats and doing what you do on a daily basis. What I want to say is that I just want to let you know that we're all in this together, and we know it's not going to be perfect, but you're teachers and you know how to do this. So go do what it is that you need to do. We've got your back. We want you to do the best that you can. And thank you for your time and your sweat and your tears, and I hopefully not blood. But from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you for taking us into this unknown. And as one school board member sits here, I've got your back. So thank you for doing what you do. And I look forward to seeing all the great things that are about to come from our teachers and our staff in this new, in this new era that we're in. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe the entire board seconds Ms. Hines' statements and comments to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And if there's no more business to come before this board, we're going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Yay.
Y'all have a great night.
Good night.
Best of school. Best of luck.